I will hereby call this meeting to order.
Well, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Schultz, Lada.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Paul Baker.
Here.
Dan Gill.
Present.
Chris Mann.
Here.
Done.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz absent.
All right, thank you. I'm clear. Um, just quick background. So for today, the work session, staff's been working on the housing incentives, kind of not just one piece of it, the whole package of incentives. Uh, we've already talked a little bit about the Housing Trust Fund, some of what's being worked on there. Um, so this is kind of piecing together, looking at some housing tip, uh, urban revitalization, Housing Trust Fund, and kind of how all those tie together. For today, it's really just a chance for get this run of everyone, get everyone's feedback. And then it's why as a work session, we're not voting to approve anything or moving anything forwards, just to make sure get everyone's input on kind of the whole package we're looking at and everyone's thoughts before we more formally bring something. So Shane, I believe, has all the information. Anybody have any questions or clarifying thoughts before we jump in? All right, go for it Shane.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, if you have the packet or slides with you, but otherwise it's up on the screen there. Um, so the Housing Needs Assessment that was completed last year does talk about, um, you know, the need for housing and then ways that, uh, we can accomplish additional housing, whether that's through certain forms of public assistance. Um, three of the things that I'm going to be covering today were are mentioned in the, in the Housing Needs Assessment is tax increment financing, TIF, uh, urban revitalization, and then also utilizing a, uh, Housing Trust Fund. So, so tax increment financing for housing and residential development is found in chapter four oh three point two two of the state code. Uh, it's actually the section that talks about public assistance related to housing and residential development. And then also has low income assistance requirements. So within chapter four oh three point two two, uh, there are some, um, limitations. One, you can only collect tax increment for a period of 10 years. That differs, uh, compared to our TIF, uh, elsewhere in the community that we have for industrial development. Those TIFs have a lifespan of either 20 years or unlimited depending on what they're designated. So for residential, it is capped at 10 years. And you can only use TIF funds to reimburse for public improvements. So for streets, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, can be for like a park, uh, that's a public, uh, public improvement as well. So these can't be, um, rebates, you know, to developers. It's, it's got to be for those costs of, of those public improvements. And then also as part of that, you have to include, uh, low and moderate income housing assistance is required as well, um, as part of that. You can either do one of two things. You can either provide an LMI set aside, a portion of, of the funds that's set aside, or you can provide LMI units within the, within the project. So what's the amount of assistance required for LMI? So for cities over 15,000, and this is found in the state code, uh, the amount of assistance required for LMI housing shall be equal to or greater than the percentage of LMI residents for the county in which their urban renewal or TIF area is located. So for Black Hawk County, the percentage of LMI residents is 43.98%. So what that means then is that 43.98% of the housing developments units shall be LMI eligible or 43.9% uh, 98% of the tax increment that's generated from that development shall go towards the LMI housing assistance within the community.
Question, assistance in the community, is that section eight vouchers?
No, and I'll, I'll kind of go into, yeah, I'll kind of go into a little bit more of that if that could be useful. So again, the, the low and moderate income family definition then, uh, in the state code, it means those families, including single person households earning no more than 80% of the higher of the median family income of the county or statewide non-metropolitan areas churned by HUD. So these are the 80% income limits that for Black Hawk County. Um, just wanted to give you the single household, two person, three person, and four, uh, four person income limits there for the 80%. So for, for an example, um, if we have a proposed new single family residential development includes 100 new lots, uh, just in general terms, then 44% of those 100 lots would have to be LMI eligible if they meet the 43.98%. If they do provide that amount of a minimum of 44, uh, lots that are eligible, then the developer would be eligible to receive 100% of the tax increments generated from that development to reimburse for the public improvement, uh, improvement costs. If they don't, say they put none or 20 units, they don't meet that 44%, then, um, the remaining percentage of that increment does go, um, so 43.98% gets withheld. And then the rest of that can go to the developer for the, for the cost. So, uh, in, in Cedar Falls, we have our tax rate of roughly $33 per thousand. There are certain limitations for TIF that we can't use, such as like the school levy, the, um, the, the people, the PEPLO levy. So our TIF rate is actually like $26 per thousand. It's about 77% of, of the total tax, uh, rate. So then, and if a, uh, developer does not provide the 44% units, then basically you take out another 44% off of the 77%. That gets you down to like 30 something percent, um, that would go back to the developer towards the public infrastructure costs.
And I know Shane will get to this, but that's part of what the Housing Trust Fund would be, is where that other money.
Yeah. So, yeah, and I'll get to that. That'll be part of the, when I get to talking about the Housing Trust Fund. But the other, the other residential component is urban revitalization. So there's urban renewal, urban revitalization. They're two slight, they're two different sections of the state code. Um, urban revitalization is actually in section four oh four of the state code. And a city by ordinance can designate an area of the city as an urban revitalization area if this area is any of the following. One, as an area of which there's a predominance of buildings or improvements where there's an existence of conditions which endanger your life or property and is detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. It's kind of a long out. Again, talks about, um, number of deteriorated or deteriorating structures, inadequate street layout, uh, things like that. Again, uh, an area where there's a predominance of buildings or improvements which, uh, by reason of age, history, architecture, or significance should be preserved. Or if there's an area which is appropriate as an economic development area as defined in, in section four oh three, which is the urban renewal, um, code section. Or if there's an area designated as appropriate for public improvements related to housing and residential development. So for urban revitalization, if there's a property that's assessed as residential, if it's designated as a slum blight or historic area, then you can receive 100% of an exemption, um, for the value added by the improvements for 10 years. So I like to think of urban revitalization as more, is more in your already developed areas where you don't need public, uh, infrastructure. That's what, what's, that's what urban renewal or TIF is more used for. Urban revitalization is probably more for existing areas where you do not need public, uh, infrastructure or public improvements. So, um, yeah, if you have a vacant lot and you build a house, yeah, you would be eligible for any, you know, or if you have an existing house and you do improvements to an existing house, the tax, the assessment value that you're increasing, you'd be eligible for, uh, and abatement on. So there, here are the three different things, the area designated for housing and residential development. You can get 100% exemption for five years on the first $75,000 of value added by the improvements. And if you have, no matter that what you designate it, uh, you can receive 115% exemption for 10 years on the first $20,000. So the state code goes into all these different scenarios on how you designate an urban revitalization area, then what your, uh, what options you have for these exemptions.
And that's all in four oh three point two two?
Uh, this is in four oh four. Yep. Uh, if you have property assessed as residential and includes three plus separate dwelling units, then you can receive 100% exemption of the value added by the improvements for, for 10 years, up to 10 years. Uh, I will note that I believe this was a change this year in the state legislature that any applications for urban revitalization that are received after July 1st of this year, the school tax, uh, school district levies are not abated as part of that. Um, so that was a change this year that state legislature made that goes into effect July 1st. So we do have, um, one urban revitalization area in the city. It's the College Hill Urban Revitalization Area. Um, you can see on the map, the area kind of shaded in green is the current, uh, boundary of the urban renewal, urban revitalization area. This was adopted by city council in 2012. And the designation for this area was blighted and historic. Um, so the, again, I think with the exemption schedule, you could offer up to 10 years uh, of exemptions, but in this plan, the city council adopted, provides 100% exemption for five years on, on properties that are eligible, that do eligible improvements in this, in this area. Uh, in that plan, it does have an expiration date of December 31st of 2032. Uh, and then again, note that any applications that, that the city may receive after July 1st, uh, those school district levies will not be abated. In my time here, I've seen, I think, two or three applications for the urban revitalization area. You don't see, uh, too many, or at least I haven't through, through this area. Um, I think one of them was the tiny home that was built on College Street up near, uh, is that, uh, 18th Street? That was a vacant lot. So they, uh, built a home on that, applied and, and received the exemption for five years for 100% of the value added for that. And if anyone does, um, any improvements to their home, they can, um, uh, submit an application. It's got to increase the property value by 10% or more. And that's determined by the county assessor. So if you're going to re-size your house or maybe put new windows on, that may not increase the value by 10% or more. That's up to the county assessor. Uh, those applications come from, come before city council, basically approving that they're, that they're in the district. And then any of the final values get looked at by the county assessor.
So if you scrape a lot and you, what value do you use then? Just a lot?
Uh, you probably go back to the, to the last tax year. I mean, if someone, I would say if someone demolished the house and left it sit vacant for a year or two, and then it got back to zero.
That's just a lot value.
Hmm. So then the third part is the, the Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund. So, uh, the Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund, the housing assistance plan has been drafted. It's in the process of being approved by the state. Uh, within this, uh, draft plan, there are planned priorities, uh, affordable rental housing expansion, homeownership accessibility, supportive housing for vulnerable populations, sustainable development, rehabilitation, community revitalization and development, and emergency housing assistance. And then within, uh, the, the Housing Trust Fund Plan, there's, uh, pro, proposed guidelines. Uh, funding will be reviewed by the Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund Board with a focus on income impact, capacity and feasibility, and project design and effectiveness. And again, these proposed funding guidelines for the Housing Trust Fund projects must primarily benefit households earning less than 80% of the adjusted county, uh, median income, with at least 30% of the funds being directed towards households earning less than 30% of the median income. And this goes to the point, um, I, I think, Darryl, what you were saying is those LMI set aside funds for projects in an urban renewal area can get funneled through the, the Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund and then put towards projects, um, anywhere in the city that go to meet the, the LMI component.
How do you advertise that?
How do we have somebody who wants to develop a low income
portable housing project? Like, how do you, are you the one that disseminates that information to a certain developer on your website?
It's not yet, because it's not in place, right?
Right.
All this, okay, but, uh,
It would be nice to be able to say, here Paul's welcoming of
Yeah, I mean, we will have.
Projects, we have these types of funds to assist with that for people that are looking to come into Cedar Falls, develop that type of project.
Yeah, we will have.
Shane, so we don't have open public comment during the work session? You're fine. It's a good question.
Well, I'm sorry.
We had during work session, you go ahead and land us stuff. If you do have a question or something, we can look, but it's counseling until we kind of got up. So go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, but well, just, I mean, if, if we move forward with a, a plan or a policy, yeah, we would have to work on how we advertise that, whether it's through our website or, um, things like that. And then also working with the Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund, because that's going to be a standalone board uh, that would, uh, and I'm assuming they would have their own, do their own, um, marketing and.
Shane has said board been identified, yeah.
Um, yes, I would ask more on that.
Yes, so, um, I couldn't rattle off the names right now, but, um, I'm on the board, uh, Mr. Brown's on the board and.
You've got.
What's the size?
Uh, what, nine members?
Nine people. And then so it's represented, you've got Operation Threshold on there. Um, Habitat for Humanity is on there, got, um, Realtor.
Uh, Erickson.
Yeah. Um, it was a mix of Realtors, service providers, um, um, you should know I can't answer right now. Um, and so there's nine people told, but that's one thing we did want to clarify is the Housing Trust Fund is its own entity. They make the decisions on who gets funded. That's where the $200,000 in state funds just about will be coming into. And any of the funds that do get funneled from this then would be to that entity to kind of decide based on their priorities for LMI projects. I think right now the established priorities that the group's focusing on is some immediate assistance. So if someone's going to lose their home because they can't afford to pay for a new HVAC in the house, there's some immediate, um, critical assistance that they'd have there. Um, these are all still pending. The group's getting finalized right now. Then also looking at like first time home buyer assistance for people that meet the LMI category. And one of the goals was how do you help people transition from section eight rental to maybe buying their first home? And so a lot of these funds would then go to that group, which would also then help. We have to have a 25% match locally for the 200,000. These funds would also help cover that match so that that will be fulfilled. And that's where we would have a close relationship with that group for the program that they're doing, what they're prioritizing, and how we're marketing and community and that.
I get a list of the board.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
All of us get a list of the board?
Mm-hmm.
I'm beginning that up.
Uh, and I think Mayor just kind of mentioned some of the, some of the program priorities in that, in the, uh, draft Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund, uh, plan is housing recap activities, owner occupied emergency break activities, home buyer assistance, financial activities, down payment, first time home buyer assistance, affordable construction activities, and emergency shelter and transitional housing activities. Uh, okay, so how does the proposed Housing Trust Fund relate to residential TIF? And I kind of touched on this just a little bit. So again, if a development says not going to provide LMI units, uh, then though that 43.98% uh, set aside would get directed towards, to the Cedar Falls Housing Trust Fund, which then can use those funds for LMI projects throughout the community. And it doesn't have to be used for projects within each urban renewal area. You can use it anywhere in the community as long as it's benefiting LMI. Uh, and again, Cedar Falls, uh, Trust Fund Board would review the project applications and determine which, uh, projects would be, receive the funding.
I can quickly, yeah, for Subi Lauren Pink with the Volunteer Centers, Cedar Valley, Barb Grant, Operation Threshold, Kevin Fettro, Andrew Builders, Kerry Winterhawk, um, who's on our housing commission, just kind of represented there. Um, Jim Brown with CFPDC, Sally Timmer with Parks and Forest Community Foundation, and Brian Gaines with the city, Ally Parrish with Habitat for Humanity, and Carl Erickson with Oak Ridge. And then it would be administered by interco, so they would manage everything back and then all the reporting, all the process part of it. And they do also manage, while we lose, Housing Trust Fund in Cedar Valley, regional law as well.
Okay, so, um, council considerations or for discussion is, do we want to create, um, a TIF incentive program for housing developments? Um, one of the things that we've, uh, discussed is, again, you can use the tax increment created within a development minus any LMI, uh, set aside amount to reimburse the developer for public improvement costs. Now, what does that look like? I think what we're kind of indicating here is to reimburse the developer, say 50%. That's just, that's just a number we're using. Um, 50% of the, um, public improvement costs, 100% of the increment minus the set, the LMI set aside, up to half of what the public improvement costs are. And these would all be spelled out in, in a development agreement with estimates and things like that from the, from an engineer that says, okay, this is going to cost, these improvements are 500,000. So the agreement would say, okay, if it's 50%, you're eligible for 250,000. Um, again, for, so for quality of life amenities, um, you know, we can reimburse the developer, um, say up to 100% of the cost, say they want to put in a park, or we're asking to do, or, uh, put in a trail or something maybe a little bit more, um, above and beyond than what we would maybe, uh, see a developer put in. Maybe we can say, okay, you're going to put in a couple acre park, you're going to be losing out on a few different lots here now because of that. And maybe the cost of that, we can reimburse 100%. So, uh, and then again, if no, uh, LMI units provided within that development, you use that set aside amount uh, within the community through the housing, the Housing Trust Fund Board.
Okay. On the, uh, quality of life, doesn't our developer code already specify certain amount of parkland and trails? Or did we revisit that yet?
No. We're in the process. Part of the master plan is to revise that policy, because right now it doesn't state how much, we just state shell, is, am I saying that correctly? Yeah, so that's something that was part of the Parks Master Plan RP was, we define and what we're expecting. So I think we would have a minimum requirement of what they have to build or provide regardless. And this would at least give us the ability, if we wanted to say, okay, you know, would you be willing to add an additional?
So this would be for over and above the basic required with Parks Master Plan.
I think that's something we still need to work on in details is, do we require a base amount? Will only incentivize above that? Because that could be something we do. And for that, we don't have the specifics for yet.
And to touch on that, I believe we had the information either in a work session or a, uh, committee meeting about how we have a hard time enforcing that. And that's why we're not getting, you know, that's why it's turning into, and part of it is legal decisions that have been made outside of the city, like precedents that have been set, right?
Oh, that's.
Am I recalling that correctly?
Hmm. So I think it's makes us clarify our current policy and what we're actually requiring, because I know we've always.
But this would help. So when the developer says, hey, I don't want to lose that money. You're making it so I don't make anything. This would help. Well, hey, you're getting that back.
Yeah, or if they have one spot, they'd be willing to put the park, but we'd like it somewhere else. But that's a higher value area. Maybe we can say, okay, we'll eat that extra amount or reimburse you for it through this. It at least gives us a little, a tool to use for that.
Right.
What's the timeline?
We have a request for a proposal out right now, but that's only a year and a half to get to an adoption.
What's the timeframe on this?
Shorter than that. And, because the interesting thing for this is it's not a ordinance or anything. It would just be more of, if we have a project come up and we want to do a development agreement, this group would have to approve that agreement. So this would be something we can get going with a lot faster, but the group will still have to ultimately approve.
Doesn't that, uh, create a gray area on what will become quality of life?
And that's why we're doing this discussion is kind of come by.
That's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, because it's been said that our developing code in relation to the quality of life is weak because it doesn't specify specifically. And then they kind of move it around. They designate it when they do the master plan and then, oops, then they develop it and then
Yeah.
we got sword fights.
Just to be clear, there is no requirement at the present moment, correct? There's no, um, acreage, you know, calculation type of thing, but the subdivision code does require um, public land, if you provide or some type of, it's up to us how we.
That's from the 96 Parks Master Plan? Have you got all of that? Is that all, right?
It's, we use our subdivision code to apply that requirement.
Okay, and that's more recent.
But we also have instances where it's not cut and dry, right? It's like, we're talking about, yeah.
Saying a park instead of a certain area park. So that's a very good point, because does, like, when we need to answer the question, is it just for anything above what a requirement is, but what a requirement's very currently? Makes like, so that's something we'll, put some thought into is how we.
So in theory, if we made a decision for this, can we update that portion of subdivision code to be more specific independently?
I would be for that.
We're saying the information from the Parks Master Plan will give us relevant data of what other communities do, what's, uh, industry standard, so we're ready to keep that to apply. So kind of hard to do without having Parks Master Plan.
Sure.
We could, we can discuss, uh, is it maybe we're saying, we'll only pay back if it's above the one acre park that we're expecting to already ask.
Yeah, it sounds like this needs to be more robustly defined.
Yeah.
If we're a year and a half out or further on.
No.
On Parks Masters, we have an understanding of, we 100% no matter what, are we 100% above a certain threshold?
Yeah.
And what's the, is, is there any challenge to update that if we have different information in the Parks Master Plan? We get that back from the consultants. They say, hey, you should have this many acres. Can we change this then?
So kind of like if you're asking if we wanted to short term, just say, let's set it at one acre.
Yeah.
Just now, and then we'll get that information, just change it again later.
Yeah.
One acre per 10 or 20 or some number?
Yeah.
Hypothetically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't throw the ball to Park.
That's very important, because we have problems. Hey, we can look into that.
So one other, uh, thing is talking about urban revitalization area. Again, we have the current College Hill Urban Revitalization, which stretches from, you know, Main Street over towards the university and about, uh, or university up to the, um, 12th Street. Um, so we could look at creating additional urban revitalization areas or infill developments needed without the need for public improvements. Um, those, again, you draft a plan and that's, uh, adopted by ordinance by the city. And again, just wanted to reiterate and council probably where both urban renewal and urban revitalization plans would require approval by city council. And then also with respect, um, to the use of TIF, you have to approve any applicable development agreements would be, will be, uh, reviewed and approved by city council as well. So just wanted to make sure that, um, all of these require council, uh, review and approval. So going back to TIF or urban renewal, yeah, we would have to set up the plan, the urban renewal plan first, which takes probably about two months through following state code requirements. That gets approved by city council, then going through, then you're allowed to bring a development agreement forward, um, subsequently after that. So, which would require city council approval as well. So I think that is all I have. If there's any questions or if you want me to go back to any certain slide, I'd be more than happy to.
I have to. Yeah, I said one thing, yeah, but it's one that clarify high level. So what we're really looking at is the housing tip is really incentivized new development and new extensions. And the goal is to use it really incentivize not just large houses, but also help start addressing those homes in the 200 to 300,000 dollar range. And then we've already had some developers say they'd be interested in addressing that with this. Um, then the urban revitalization is really the end of the piece. Like, how do we still incentivize and make sure people are investing in the homes we have? Filling in within current available space, because infill development's always cheaper for options along the way for future. And then the Housing Trust Fund is that piece to make sure we're addressing LMI that all the funds that are being generated through the TIF, even if it doesn't go to an LMI, I haven't has that out, but, but they kind of all three work in tandem, but they're all three separate. Things, the urban revitalization, we would still, if we wanted to move forward with it, we would have to designate which areas do we want to be urban revitalization? Because it's not the whole town. There's specific areas we want to look at without that good use and info focus. Um, like we all know, College Hill area as well, but even just that stretch from kind of First Street, looking down, um, between Hudson and Main Street. So that's kind of what we're looking for today is just generally is that direction we want to go. And then we can start putting specifics together on which areas we think we would designate, how we would do the housing TIF. Um, because all those would have to be individually approved TIFs in a development agreement probably with the developers.
Yeah, ideally, we would like to see developers include the LMI units within, and that incentivizes them because then they're eligible to receive that full amount, um, you know, and then the, the Housing Trust Fund still gets their funding through this, you know, they, they still have their role. Um, but yeah, we, and from a couple of developers we've talked to, um, I think they do have an interest in putting in and meeting those requirements for LMI, which is, which is good.
Does, how much do they get for, is it 200? How much is it that the, the Housing Trust Fund gets from the state?
The Housing Trust gets 200,000 from the state.
Okay.
And then.
Just yearly.
Yeah. And then part of the goal, I think, too, is doing the housing TIF piece does give the developer incentive to get moving on the project. Because the sooner they get it developed, you know, they start collecting the, the revenue, because if they wait on it too long, they'll miss that collection. Cause the sooner they get it developed, you know, they start collecting the, the revenue, because if they wait on it too long, they'll miss that collection, so.
Right, yeah, that's the other important piece, right, is it's, it's a rebate, so they have to start creating taxable value to get anything. So they need to start building homes, they need to start paying the taxes, and then we collect, so we're not collecting or using any funds from other city sources, we're using those funds directly within their development, so they're creating it, um, they're creating that increment, and then we're reimbursing them for that.
Just for the record, Gil is here.
Who monitors the ongoing occupancy of LMI in a project?
That's a good question, and I am not one hundred percent sure on.
Cause you start with it and then could change.
So, I think, yeah, cause I don't know for the state requirement, who monitors it? Um, cause I know it has to be built within the price range of what someone at that salary could afford. Is that a set number somewhere right now?
And that the definition of affordable housing, how is it one third of your gross?
Yeah, so I don't know, they'd probably have a calculation with the state, I'm guessing for
Other programs in the past have had a, a five-year time period on it, so when you go up to um, uh, Foxview, they had a five-year time period. When we did the program, um, uh, down at University and, and uh, Hudson Road, what was that? Shane, what was the name of that program that we did right after two thousand eight flood, it was um,
By the Creek?
Yeah, it was by, there was a name for, but anyway, so the owner occupied, had to have that home for five years. So I'm assuming that's probably gonna be a very close time period, is, seems to be what they, they have on those. Now I know, like, uh, I'll use Foxview, when the five years um, was over, the prices of the homes shot up quite a bit.
I was gonna say, hopefully the low-income person isn't always low-income, I mean, improve themselves and
Yeah, cause that was a big goal of the trust fund, is how to help people have that next step transition. That's a good question, right, in this market, you should buy and keep it.
Yes, I think I got answers.
Yeah.
I think it's a great tool, have in our uh, tool belt, and obviously we need housing, I'm a big proponent of infill, so I'm all for it.
Um, I did check with some other communities, I think there's even in the um, housing needs assessment, I think there's a table there at the bottom about what other communities in the area do, and a lot of the, a lot of the bigger communities utilize either forms of either TIF or urban revitalization, so um, the one that I probably looked at the most was the city of Dubuque, they instituted, their city council instituted a policy back just in twenty twenty-three. Start using residential TIF, um, so they enter into, they, they TIF these certain development areas, working with a developer, and then they entered into development agreements to, yeah, uh, reimburse a hundred percent of the tax increments for the public improvement costs, so this is kind of similar that uh, to what the city Dubuque is doing, and I think they've gotten off to a pretty good start, I think they've had a couple already approved, so.
Like, when you talk about historic, when I think of Dubuque, the vibe of Dubuque is historic, so like, you don't wanna lose, like, and same thing around here, I mean, we don't wanna lose anything we can do to promote saving some of these old houses or helping to save them, obviously, I feel like it's good for everybody, it's good for the person that lives in it, it's good for the city, cause it keeps the vibe the same, so.
No public comment, yeah. We know that, there was
I'll eventually have a question, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, we're the S M D here, you folks can go until you're done if you want.
I was just gonna say that, I brought this up at a council meeting, that our lots in town seem to be dramatically higher than other communities, and so the competition to get people to buy our lot, Cedar Falls Lot versus other communities around us were almost double, so we should look at what are we requiring that may not be needed for the developers to be putting in? Or somehow get in line with what other communities are doing, I think that's a huge thing here.
And I will say in tandem with this, there is a few things currently we're in discussion on, on some of the requirements for building things. We are also looking at probably this fall, uh, we're just working out timelines with staff's capacity on doing the full process of having a committee with a group of developers, contractors, mid-size, large, across the board, and going through just each step of our development process, working with improvements made, what's working, what's not working, so that's what we want to go hand in hand is improving the process, but also making sure we're
Well, what other communities are doing to make it so cheap, more economical.
Yeah, and I do think, I see this as not a, let's put this in place permanently, this would probably be every year a goal setting, you look at, are we still seeing the need on housing? Do we wanna continue to make this policy something we're doing each year, so it'd be something that we make sure we're saying, okay, if all of a sudden we end up with a bunch of extra housing that we don't need, we're not gonna keep incentivizing it. But I don't think right that far right now, um, so this would be something we review each year, as goal setting is to make sure this is still lining up with or is it, do we have the right incentives in place, is there something that could be better, or something we should have more of, less of?
And you have heard from people that they're like interested.
Yes, yep, so we've got direct projects that are interested now and going with them, especially that helped start getting housing in that under three hundred thousand range.
And like, uh, Brian said, promote this through Iowa.
Yeah, cause this is something we need to do a lot more promotion for, cause I think housing incentives is one of those things, like the rental conversion programs, for example, where it's always there, but it really wasn't marketed, so it didn't get people using it, so then every year we have that discussion of do we need it or don't we, so this would be something I think we do a lot of promotion behind to make sure we're seeing the projects we wanna see.
Website currents, whatever.
Yeah, social media marketing campaign. Yeah, the city of Dubuque put together some nice brochures after their council approved theirs, so that there's things we can even look at, but other communities are doing the second, I think we need to recreate the wheel.
And Shane, can you talk a little bit about if there are like smaller, you know, say someone wants to make like a you know, apartment complex, or like, you know, kind of like a mini neighborhood, and obviously that doesn't necessarily fall into TIF, does that have to be like, what's the size restraints on it, or is there one?
So, for, again, when it comes to TIF, is, as long as there's public improvements that are required, then we can reimburse for that, otherwise you'd probably be looking at something like urban revitalization, I think the urban revitalization code you just have to have more than at least one building, is what the code requirement is, so. Um, but yeah, even if it's a smaller development, you put in a, a road or some, you know, extend some, some infrastructure, I think then it can be TIF eligible. As long as that's the only thing it's reimbursed.
Sure.
Do you want me to see more than one?
For urban revitalization, you can't just put an urban revitalization plan like on one lot, yeah.
Well, but you can do the improvements of over ten, I'll believe in many of these. I'll still think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll study this.
So Shane, I won't make you start from the beginning, unless And, and maybe this was discussed or, or not, but I've seen just in the recent months, it seems to be an interesting thing, not just taking a, like a church and building, but I know of six lots where it looks like the people that someone bought the home and tore it down, and are putting in a new home in the area, is that qualify for any of this, and is that?
If, yeah, I mean, if it's within an area that has like existing infrastructure, that's probably geared more towards the urban revitalization program.
You asking if it's already in the
Or, are you asking if these projects are already in?
Or, could be.
Uh, if, yeah, I mean
Future projects like that.
Saying if someone tore, say, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, they tear it down, and they build a two hundred fifty thousand dollar
Right.
What can they qualify for, if it's urban revitalization, this is cause I'm guessing it's the current housing area, it's not gonna be a TIF, that'd be urban revitalization, which I'm guessing they would qualify for that additional
Yeah, for the increased valuation. Yeah, and the big difference between TIF and urban revitalization is TIF is a rebate that can go, that goes back to the developer. Urban revitalization, like our College Hill Urban Revitalization Plan, goes to the homeowner. So if you own a home, you know, on College Street somewhere, and you put a new two-stall detached garage on it, that tax uh, exemption comes to you as the owner, uh, whereas TIF, you're looking at a, a developer and then getting reimbursed through public, for public improvement.
How many years after I build that garage can I make it an auxiliary?
I think wait, was, but it's not triggered until you increase it ten percent of the value.
Ten percent of the value, yeah.
I don't know what there would be, but
Yeah, and this is
voted on the policy.
Oh, okay, probably talking, yeah, I mean, there's gonna have to be a, a date, yeah, you're right, cause if there's some existing developments that just started last year, and they're gonna I mean, we'll have to put it, put a date whether it's from council approval for
Yeah, we talked about that with some existing developments that are midway in the process, and when is it?
Well, something like, say, I don't know, just automated where it's multiple sections.
Yeah.
Then it would be the newest section.
Well, essentially the development agreement is where this gets included in, right? So if they don't have an existing development agreement, something that could probably be included at that point.
So are we saying that all of Cedar Falls is falling into this revitalization?
No.
Great.
Yep, so we, I think, would be very specific on which neighborhoods actually need this type of encouragement for that reinvestment into So, just a curiosity of the group here, the majority of us say, hey, let's hear from some stakeholders, we got till six twenty-five for the start of our next meeting. I'd be okay with hearing some of those projects that are already in the works potentially, from members of the public that might be getting it here. Others on work with hearing from the public?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so don't everybody jump at once.
So, the revitalization goes up to twelfth street, what's the, what's the consideration to take that all the way to first? There's some still character of neighborhoods that would need assistance in that direction, but what's the pros and cons of doing? And or the infill with the potential new high school property?
Yeah, I'm gonna
Of course, it's twelve or something like that.
But then also it's a lot of the city too.
So the, the area in green is the current College Hill Urban Revitalization Bank, that goes down uh, Franklin Street is the east boundary, and then uh, uh, Eighteenth Street is the north boundary, and, and just goes just south of University Avenue. So any projects within this urban revitalization area um, are geared more towards infill rehab, things like that, you do something to your house, or in the case like the, the, the tiny home on College um, street, that was an existing vacant lot, they built that house, they submitted the application, came through council, went to the assessor's office, and it clearly met the ten percent valuation increase, cause it was just a piece of land before that. So for that, they were eligible then for a hundred percent uh, tax exemption for five years on that increased valuation, so they still pay the tax on the land, whatever that land was worth, they still have a small tax bill for that, but for the first five years, they got a hundred percent exemption on that increased valuation, and that's handled right through Black Hawk County, through the assessor's office.
To your question, like for the old high school site, I think that'd be a conversation for us, is that something we consider in urban revitalization area, and do things qualify for that? We don't have, cause we can't double dip, we can't have a TIF and
Right.
It's all the same tax law, so it'd be a discussion of, is that an area we want to do a TIF development, or is that just urban revitalization? So that's something we need to be strategic about is which areas are we trying to encourage, which type of development, what qualifies?
Yeah, that as well, Mayor, is, is, again, the character of the neighborhood in Ward One up there, there's a lot of, there's still a big need for revitalization as well, so if there's a consideration to go just further north, or just pockets of, or
Right, I think that's what you were talking about, Mayor, do you potentially go all the way up to First Street?
Yeah.
You know, and, and then expand it, maybe, well, maybe to Hudson Road, or, you know, and some of those other uh, character neighborhoods, north, north of those. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, ultimately, it's up to council, you know, we, we would, you draft the plan, and as long as it meets those criteria, one, at least one of those criteria that I talked about earlier for the revitalization code, then you can create that plan.
Question, then, on these expiration dates, just using this as the current College Hill, um, if somebody started a project, or I guess finished a project in two thousand thirty-one, do they only get one year, or do they get five years? This expiration date, is that a new project?
Without consulting, we go council, my guess is if you were to apply for it by that date, you would be eligible, that's my, yeah, but I don't so I think after that date, you don't take any of that.
Yeah. Cause you're looking at ten years here, well, you would assume that everybody's gonna start in the first year.
So, so that's TIF. Yeah, so ten, that's ten years.
Ten years, even if you started in the ninth year?
Well, they would be their own separate designated areas.
Right.
All right, right. So they would just be their urban revitalization, that was
I'm just
Yeah, so
Legal research is needed here.
Anyone else from the public have comments?
Well, just to your point, I don't know, um, Mr. Winger, if you'd like to just discuss the project you're working on?
Yeah, we've got some ground on twelve street that we acquired a couple years ago now. Months ago, um, sixteen acres, it's through the comprehensive plan, it's medium density, most of it's medium density. Um, and we'd like to do some of this workforce housing, affordable housing type development within their um, units from a hundred and sixty thousand, whether they're rental or purchase, probably leading towards rental in that, in that price point, um, up to houses as as small yet desirable as we can make them for the consumer. Um, all I think would be under that, what IEBA considers um, workforce housing, they have a cap on it, so if you apply for these workforce housing tax credits, they give you a two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar vertical construction cap on each of these houses, so that's a difference there workforce housing, up to two ninety-eight for a single family, and up to two hundred and forty-one thousand for a model.
So now counting the foundation, you say up?
Uh, not counting any groundwork, so not counting underground utilities, not counting dirtwork, not counting any of that, this is just once you start to build a home.
So the foundation?
That, that's within that.
Okay, or you choose a slab?
Yep.
Okay.
However you wanna do it.
Yeah.
So those are what IEBA right now classified workforce housing, that's not in, in any way related to the LMI number. Um, but that's just how IEBA works through their workforce housing tax credit valuation. So a lot of what we've put in there in this, we've calculated that we could probably put up to a hundred and forty units on, on that sixteen acres. Uh, a little bit denser in a building that we're looking at right now, and you're actually on your I believe you can request for support, very similar to what you guys did. Uh, so that's kind of what we're looking at on that site now, we worked with framing in, and we understand how the subdivision code requires entrances and exits to be appropriately done by code. In this little site, there's a lot of public improvement that needs to be done through roads, we've got two entrances coming in off the west side. Um, the code would probably like us to have two up at the east side, I don't know if that's feasible. Uh, we've got a really bad grade chain on, on the south side, that might not be feasible, but we would connect into Character Lane across Paul Street, so we're looking at four or five entrances and exits off of that, with probably twenty-two hundred feet of road required to serve all of that. So that starts to get really, really expensive, and to get portable housing, those are the big costs, putting that road in is a really large cost applied to what that vertical construction, to figure in our lot cost is, is really where things are getting quite expensive.
That lends to what I said earlier about why is Cedar Falls so high compared to other communities?
But it, I mean, it is probably right of how we're supposed to, to develop that central area, cause it's got houses.
Well, yeah, but I'm just in general.
You're right, yeah.
How many units, just say, Brian?
Hundred and what?
Hundred and four.
If we maxed it out, we can probably do a hundred and forty-four, I think we calculated, but it would probably be in that one twenty to one thirty, yeah, range.
So I'll save some of this discussion for later, but I've already spoken to Chase about this, and Danny and I talked about it here this week or sometime, and the the issues of getting Eighteenth Street to run over to you, you know, what seems, you know, and I know Chase, you say there's some physical issues of that happening, plus what's already been developed over there, but I think that's something that needs to be, especially now with the, off of Union Road, starting to work east that way, and, and to put all that pressure on Union first and twelve, because you know, to go all the way over to University Avenue isn't gonna be the
I think we gotta stay on topic.
Yeah, yeah, we'll stay on that.
It does lend to, this does, I think, just kind of look at the process with staff, it gives us a little more leverage as the city to say, you know, here's how we'd like to see this done for the best traffic flow and things, knowing its additional cost, this at least helps the This at least helps alleviate some of what we're asking for that adds cost to the project, but hopefully gives us a better neighborhood in the long run.
And each of those development agreements will lead to you being just because of that, infrastructure, parks, all of those different things that we look at adding in there.
Something maybe out of topic, but can we do one-way streets and something like if you're developing to go in one side, out the other and not be as wide on the street? Are we frowning upon one-way streets in Cedar Falls?
The resident.
We're not going to touch that one.
Yeah.
Couple minutes we have.
We're throwing it up in the alley.
I would guess that that's probably not really desirable.
So we got also like two or three minutes for Mr. Wilson.
Yes, a question on you or a, um, so you want to see growth, you want to see improvements in that area. Um, my question is, is there people that live there actually know that they can do that? It kind of goes back to the whole thing about more how you're marketing what you're doing, but you know, you're saying that you asked for the ten percent increase of value. So are they getting that assessed value when they submit their plans prior to actually doing the work? Or is that actually happening after the fact? And then they're getting saying, okay, we're, we're short on that. So my, my thought is, I mean, just looking at that going, it's a big area. You want to see growth. You want to see change. Do these folks even know that they can go start doing improvements to their homes and hopefully get some kind of tax rate?
That's the adversary.
Kind of goes back to.
Gil's going to ask me about.
Improvement fund already, which was underutilized. I don't think the education was there. So.
Well, I mean, I'll speak to that from the College Hill partnership perspective. I think there was initially some advertising and there was, you know, like information that was available, but I think just a lot of people felt that it was like complicated or they didn't have the money upfront to do those things. And now I'm sure it's just gone from everyone's mind.
If you do a kitchen project, you can increase your value pretty quickly.
Yeah.
People probably put them on hold because they don't realize that there are funds that can come back to them. So you have something to think about.
Yeah.
And then. As someone that lives in that greens area, uh, yeah, we forgot about that.
And you already did some.
Not to increase value like that, but, yeah.
So then really what we'll be looking for is this, if there's general support for this, we'll start just looking at what districts should be urban revitalization. Um, we'll flesh out more of the details on like those numbers, like the fifty percent cap, who said hundred percent for parks, those are all things we're proposing. Um, because you can make those numbers anything you want. So we'll probably put together a more specific here is what we're proposing and bring that back to council with probably a map of here's what we're thinking for the revitalization districts. And then said the housing trust funds its own entity, but we'll have more details with how that will work. And was there any other direction from?
I was gonna say you could. Right. You could look at current assessed value of housing in certain blocks to determine, well, this could be a boost for other parks that are quite nicely high or whatever. A good indicator right there, what needs to be.
Some evaluations are versus what.
Would also throw in there that I think a focus on some better than par parks would be good for these areas that once developed, you're, you're lost. You can't go back and reclaim. So I think even though we are eighteen months out from that master plan, looking at how we might incentivize some of those types of developments in partnership with these developers to say, hey, you put in a premier park, you're going to get clientele. That'd be a focus area. I'd like to see with that.
Because we're eighteen months out on the parks plan, because I think I've heard anybody voice any objection to anything we've talked about here tonight. What's our timeline for staff to bring us something back to react to? Uh, I think some of that could be sooner.
Yeah.
Again, each individual development agreement. So, yeah, negotiate that upfront with the developer and it's right in there. So.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't see any reason to stand in the way of any of this.
Yeah, there's no red tape.
I felt like I was winning just as we talked about. Me too.
Yes, the housing tip, we can start bringing projects forward now with those. Um, the urban revitalization, we'll need to actually put together the districts with that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna end up by everyone, but.
Great. Thanks.
I have something on that. I have something. Really touched the current downtown urban revitalization area. Does that change anything for that? So if you expand that and say you want to go farther south past Seven Street, which it currently ends at, and you want to drag it down Main Street because that's now under the urban general frontage under the, the new zoning code, you know, that really makes sense to, to incentivize redevelopment along that area where you, the code's asking for a more dense building to be rebuilt on that if it was ever torn down. If you touch that revitalization area, does that change how your current mid work at all?
So the Smiths are a whole separate whole gesture, but I, I wouldn't even say that you would drag that, that you are a solid grid document. It created a new one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, and you have to do on.
No expression.
No expiration date.
They don't need to be contiguous. Do they need to be adjacent at all? Okay. Yes.
Just like that.
I think we're gonna have to cut time because we're supposed to be meeting our other meeting in one minute. National seven comic question.
Is College Street the, the dark area between the, the dark and the green?
Olive. Olive, so yeah, Olive Street is college. Yep. So between college and all of this. All right, and.